Well, welcome everybody to Fort Thomas City Council Meeting. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I guess Melissa, you want to call roll? Let's do it that way. Go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Collier.
Here.
Mr. Beesold.
Here.
Mr. Peterman is not here yet, and Mr. Blau.
Here.
Okay, great. A first item on the agenda is the minutes of the April 6th meeting, so entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve.
Just second.
Motion and a second. We'll call vote please, Melissa.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beesold.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye.
All right, I guess we go down to reports of officers, the Fire Department Monthly Report and the Police Department Monthly Report were included in the packets. So we'll drop down to the City Administrator's Report. Ron, unmute yourself and give us an update on your report, if you would.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have a number of items to cover this evening. First of all, I know, I think Joe's getting Roger hooked up, so he'll be joining us here shortly. As the mayor mentioned, you do have reports from police and fire. If you have any questions, certainly direct them to me or we'll communicate back through staff. If you've had an opportunity to look at those. Beyond that, I do have some update information. It was included in your packet, a number of these items, and then I've had a few add-on items as well, just to update the community on some of the things that we're working on. So I'll just walk through some of them. If anybody wants to stop me to have discussion, we can certainly do that. The first item in my head was the North Fort Thomas Avenue sidewalk project that is proceeding. The submittals have gone to the state. They've been approved for right away acquisition. So now the final drawings are being approved. So without any delays at the state level, which we don't anticipate at this point, that project will move forward. We will bid it in June. The work will be performed this year. The completion deadline will be likely sometime in November. And we'll talk about how that relates to the street program in a minute. But it does push resurfacing of North Fort Thomas Avenue into next year. Again, we'll relate all those things back to the street program. So, you know, weather and timing. We should get done in October or November of this year was just good. As far as budget development, we have a request out for the committee, and we'll talk about some of the other committee meetings as well. But we're looking to get that committee together early next week. Staff is almost done with our draft of budget for the 2020 or 2021 budget. That'll be presented in committee and forwarded to council. As you know, we have a meeting in, two meetings in June to consider budget. Those meetings are June 1st and June 15th. We anticipate that we would do both of those meetings. The items on the agenda for June 1st basically would be presentation of the budget and first reading of a budget. And then, of course, second reading and a potential vote at the second meeting, which would be June 15th. Update on union negotiation information, as I've reported in the past, we kind of had a suspension of those when we started into this whole COVID crisis and we were able to, you know, balance some of that in terms of how our personnel were settling into that and the different protocols. So we've been able to meet with those three groups and have made pretty good progress with each of them. We do have meetings scheduled with each of them again in the next two weeks. So we're still targeting with those groups to have completion of union negotiations available to be part of our budget in this coming year and hopefully settle before the expiration of those at the end of this fiscal year. So that's our target date. And we're still hoping to attain that. I referenced the street program. Obviously, we did not conduct a public hearing in March. That is an issue, even though we're able to do meetings like this in this fashion. Having a public meeting where there's interaction with the public without being present in the same location is still something that's being vetted out. Some communities have started to get into that world. I know Jan had done some research. And they've held some public hearings. It's possible. We can do that. Ideally, obviously, we'd like to hear from our public in person. And where I think we are with our timeline, I referenced North Fort Thomas being deferred. One of our first items on our agenda tonight is a interlocal agreement with the county, the fiscal court on Crowell Avenue. There's a water main project scheduled for Crowell. And that gets pushed back into next year. There's some work scheduled off of Military Parkway at the Water District. So that's the third street that's really impacted by some potential projects. So we've kind of recrafted the idea that maybe we could get into a street program as far as performing work early next year. We've talked to contractors. Bidding the project early through the winter would give us good competitive pricing for an actual contract that would be performed in the second quarter of next year. That would include all the streets that we had planned under this program. So that would target us to do a public hearing perhaps in the first part of September of this year. Receive the input that we need from our residents to go through, intend to proceed. In this summer, we could still do a lot of the work that we do surrounding the street program, for example, driveway replacement, spot curb repair, adjustments to storm sewers. And then, of course, our sidewalk program. So all those items could be done this summer still, leading into those streets. And then, public hearing that would cover all the items that are covered under assessments. And then bidding that work out to be included with the streets that are already going to have to be deferred till next year. So that's kind of our projected timeline. It still comes in under the fiscal year budget. Being performed that way, the only difference is the work would be done perhaps in April and May of next year instead of October, November of this year, of this calendar year. So we think that's very doable. Moving on, a couple of other items, the farmer's market is scheduled to open. They will be opening the first Wednesday on schedule. There are a number of restrictions, obviously, with the COVID requirements. I know Debbie's worked with the board that volunteers, they were a great volunteer board that works through the farmer's market. They've worked with all the vendors. The vendors are very excited about participating this year. It would be at the same location in Tower Park. The regulations would call for different protocols for the numbers of people that would be there. How they handle the materials that they're selling, not unlike the reopening of businesses, the interaction with restaurants. But they've worked closely with the Health Department. They feel like they can do that. Everybody's pretty comfortable with the arrangement. Of course, it's outdoors in the park. We would cut some of the other items that had started to be part of that activities, for example, things oriented around families being there and kind of people milling around a little bit longer. So it'll be a little bit more of a vendor and client contact without anything else kind of surrounding it. Limited numbers of individuals within the area at a given time, that type of thing. But everybody's a go on that, so they're excited about doing it. I think it would be great for the community to have some of our normalcy, some of our events that we can't pull off at this point. This is one that we think that we can. Update on some projects, Tower Park Street resurfacing. Other than the spring that we just was thrown on us with weather today and maybe going for the next couple of weeks, it looks like they were scheduled to be resurfacing, doing curbs, everything in Tower Park. So they will be there weather dependent, and that'll take about three weeks of workday. So that'll put them into June. Clearly, to complete all of the parking lot areas and the curbing and the intersection with Alexander Circle, resurfacing with Alexander Circle, the new parking areas up and around the mess hall and so forth. But they are ready to be here as their next project. In your council package, you had annual reports. We were not going to accept those in a verbal fashion tonight. And I think what we might do with those is maybe record them with our department heads and post them. And then they would be available so they can talk about the report. They don't know that, so I'm just sharing that information right now.
No, I think that's an excellent idea because even when they give the reports, we don't have that many people attend the meeting.
Sure.
So give people an opportunity to, you know, hear the report in its entirety. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. So we'll work on doing that. And certainly, if you have questions after we put those forth, I think you all have had an opportunity to look at them, but if we post them, then you have questions, we can certainly entertain that and accept them formally at a subsequent meeting. I'll go back to implementation that's on your list. One item I did want to mention, we are working with South Bank Partners. We are members of South Bank Partners. We are working with them to make a submittal. I know this council had a lot of input from folks on Chesapeake about a number of items related to speeding and lack of sidewalks and buses because they're in the county school district and they have a busing route there. So we are working with South Bank Partners to submit a tap grant. That closing on that grant is early June, so it's in progress. We've done cost estimating. That entire section, just for the record, preliminary cost estimates, because there is some retaining walls and some realignment of the road, minor realignment. The total price tag on that sidewalk from the top of the hill to the corporation line is just over a million dollars. And we are submitting that in two different applications. So it'll be a phase one and a phase two. So we are currently breaking down that information. That type of grant, when you're over that 500,000, 600,000 threshold, it starts to get a little bit less attractive under that program, just in the amount of monies that are awarded. So we're going to have to break that project up in order to get that type of funding. Going back to implementation, the community plan, we've had opportunities to work with Chris Manning, the mayor and I, kind of continuing that whole method of vetting out some of our projects and having Chris do some of the preliminary design aspects of that and then putting those things together. I think we're at a point where we would like to have our council committees updated. So what we're looking at is potentially getting those meetings set maybe before our next council meetings to do an update presentation of where we are with some of that project development. So, for example, we're looking attentively at doing the Recreation Committee update at the June 1st meeting. And we've also been working with Joe Hayes on the city building. The design aspects that we're looking at here at the city building. And we have some very strong preliminary concepts that meet all the design needs that we had initially. We haven't gone very far with any further development of that part of the project until council is updated. But we're ready to do that, and I think we'll schedule that meeting with Buildings and Utilities Committee of Council before the June 15th meeting to do an update, if that's okay with everybody. But that's kind of where we're headed with those two projects. There's a number of other items in those Buildings and Utilities, for example, that we would update that's going on throughout the community in that same meeting. So we'll reach out to the committees to set those up. And I have just wanted to talk, well, I'll do a couple of other updates really on a couple of other projects. And if there's other projects you want to hear about, please let me know. The One Highland project obviously was seized as far as the activity on site once, timing wise, when we hit this whole crisis situation. They are scheduled to come in and do some maintenance items. I know a lot of people have commented about the water collecting there. They're going to install a pump that would be permanently placed during this period of time. It would allow them to keep that site dry. With the upcoming potential of weather warming up, they are going to treat the site for mosquitoes as well, in case there's any infestation already. And then beyond that, they are looking to do their bond issue. They're approved for their financing. They are looking at about a 30-day closing period, and I think they're looking to schedule construction to begin by July 1st. So that's kind of the tentative setup unless something changes between now and then, they're ready to start that project as far as the construction under that timeframe. Alexander Circle, they have first closings this month. So they'll be closing on their first properties up there. They're looking for occupancy in June with their first tenants. If you've been on the site, which is still a little, still a little difficult to get through there, but they're doing a lot of site work right now. They actually have placed some sod. They've done driveways. They play streetlights. They're doing some general cleanup of the site, but they've done finished grade on a number of the lots already. So it's coming together pretty quickly. Obviously, the weather that's pending is potentially going to hold up that progress a little bit, but they're trying to get it ready for the resurfacing that's scheduled in the next few weeks. So that's all exciting, that those are moving forward. I just wanted to, well, before I get to that, I'm going to ask Joe to update the grow grant projects that this council approved at the last meeting and give information on how that was received and distributed in the community. I see Ken had a question, maybe.
Yeah, I do. Well, two, actually. Ron, I would hope that with the farmer's market reopening in June, that there would at minimum be a mask requirement for the vendors and hopefully for the patrons as well.
They intended definitely for the vendors and I believe for anyone in attendance, but I'm not positive on that, Ken, but they're following all the Health Department guidelines and everything that's required. So that's all set up. We have to have hand sanitizer stationed at the point where they're let in. I'm not positive on the mask for the people attending, but I know all the vendors have to wear gloves and masks and so forth. But we're going to meet all those standards for Health Department CDC requirements.
I hope so. And then what you were just saying about, there's been a lot, a lot on social media about concerns about One Highland inactivity in the pooling of water. So it's going to remain inactive until July as far as construction goes? Is that what you said? But there'll be a pump and mosquito treatment?
Yeah, they're going to install a pump immediately, and they're going to do the treatment immediately this week. And then, yes, their intention is to start within the 30 days of closing their financing.
Okay, so probably no actual activity, moving dirt or anything until July?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ron, I had a question. Perhaps you could update on our city-specific services. I know government agencies were allowed to open today. So if you could just give some updates specific to Fort Thomas and then maybe parlay that into some of our recreation availabilities as well.
Sure. Actually, that's my last item because I just want to cover it under COVID.
I'm sorry.
You're ahead of the class there. That's good. Let's get Joe to report, and then we can come back to that if you don't mind.
Okay, so as far as the grow grants and small business loans, just for raw numbers, we actually had 22 applications for loans of which 20 were approved at 2,500 feet, so we're at $50,000 even in loans given out. That was pretty well received. Grants, we actually had 70 applications. They trickled in very slowly at first and then came in as a tidal wave at the very last second. So we had quite a few of those to look at, approve. We received 70 applications. Of those, 64 were approved. There were a couple of businesses that didn't have a current license, a couple that were home-based businesses which didn't qualify. So we approved 64 of them, and the simple math was $60,000 divided by 64 for $937.50 a piece. So we sent out 64 checks for $937.50. Well, actually, we, Melissa and myself made some phone calls, sent some emails, contacted everybody individually. We probably mailed, what, Melissa, 15 of them, give or take?
Yeah, maybe. Most people wanted to pick them up.
Exactly. Almost everybody else picked them up. So we had a great day of staging checks out in the lobby for everybody. So basically, we, both programs were pretty good success, to be honest. The loans really exceeded probably my expectations, and the grants, while I think we sent out about 220 notifications, 70 applications is pretty good because it meant that everybody got about $1,000 a piece. Anything more would have polluted it. So it really worked out well in the end.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, going back to kind of just an overall COVID update. Obviously, things have evolved over time, and we're continuing to experience that. We have created some continuing collaborations with other agencies through this process, with other communities. There's, we have a weekly phone conferencing with all the communities in Campbell County that spearheaded by the fiscal court. So we have an opportunity to kind of compare notes, talk about what's going on throughout the county, what Saint East numbers are showing us. Maybe some approaches to reopening at this point, which is a lot of the conversation presently. So we are adjusting based on a lot of that information. Obviously, we're following the CDC and the governor's orders and trying to incorporate those things into what we're doing here at the city. We obviously have been in full employment with our groups. Our safety departments, our public works, and we'll continue to do all those services in the community. As indicated at the last meeting, our staff is some working remotely and some working within the city building, but the city building is closed, as are all of our other facilities. And Mark, you referenced the opening of city buildings and other government buildings. The intention right now is to not reopen, and we do not have an opening date at this point. Some communities have chosen to do it quicker. I think the trend in Northern Kentucky is to not open their city buildings just yet. Specifically to Fort Thomas, we do not have immediate need to create that contact with our public. We're not in tax season. There's not issues related to people having to have access, direct access face-to-face with our employees. We've done a really good job kind of creating those methods that allow us to make those contacts. You just heard Joe talk about getting checks distributed and so forth, and we haven't had any glitches in that area. So we're going to move a little bit slower with just opening the city building proper. We're here, we're working, we're accessible. The standards, as you may know, for reopening government buildings are pretty stringent. It involves a lot of personnel being directed just for the purpose of directing people to the locations and maintaining separation and handling of documents a certain way, cleaning all the facilities at least every two hours. So we're going to look at how we approach that moving into the next couple of weeks and see what our exact need is in that regard. As far as other facilities, again, we'll be following kind of the lead of our outdoor facilities. We have no timeline for doing anything with our playgrounds, for example, at this point. We are working with the sports leagues because the June 15th date that's being suggested. We have started to do maintenance on ball fields, for example, with the idea that they may be playable come the middle of June. But we're not opening them. We're not directing people to them. We've actually had some input about us working the fields. Like, we can't do all of them at once. So we are starting maintenance on them. We'll talk about, you know, whether or not we could offer our public restrooms in association with maybe some scheduled league play, but to maintain them and clean them that often all day through, you know, any daylight hours would be really difficult at this point. But as we get to warmer weather, we're going to have to look at some some potential for having, particularly if the playground's open and there's kids that are in the park for that reason. We would have to look at some schedule of opening public restrooms, for example. So we're operating with the idea that we're moving with the opening of all the potential city facilities and trying to create a plan that would allow us to meet those goals for the times that are being set out in front of us. One thing that has come to light, and this is something that we're currently working through at a staff level. For example, we've had a number of groups, even businesses say, is there a potential that we could use spaces in the park? So, for example, to do exercise classes, to do dance recitals at the amphitheater where they schedule things over a longer duration and allows people to be outside where you can do easier social distancing, those types of things. Those are not traditional things that we have offered in our parks. We certainly don't want to do things to lease spaces in the park that would restrict other visitors from the parks. But we do think that there's going to be an ongoing need to consider, for example, greater use of the amphitheater space and potentially leasing that space in some way. Recognizing that it's still in a public park and it's not exclusive, but they're going to have to potentially manage the spaces along with city staff under some guidelines and directives from the city. So we're at least studying that aspect of it. Beyond that, the Fire Department is working on a PPE grant. They did a joint submittal with other communities in Campbell County. And what that grant opportunity is, is to cover future expenses for PPE through the end of this calendar year. So what they've done is they've used the last two and a half months, projected it out to the end of the year. All of those communities together have made a joint application through a FEMA grant. So hopefully, we'll get that through. It amounts to about $9,000 for the city. It's about $90,000 in the county with all the cities combined. So we're hopeful that that goes through. As far as reimbursement, we are tracking all those expenses that are COVID-related. I know the state's ready to implement a plan, but it would just be for lost expenses but not lost revenues. So, for example, we have no recovery of all the cancellations of all of our facilities. So any of our game room rentals or our mess hall rentals, shelter rentals, any of those things are lost to us at this point, but beyond that, we will try to recover costs or anything related to COVID, so.
Ron, is that dealing with the CARES funding that you're talking about?
The CARES funding that the state is going to designate, don't quote me on the numbers, it was $150 million maybe that the state had.
I think it's 300.
I'm sorry?
I think it's 300.
Yeah, and I think they designate a portion of that to county and local governments, but it's for its expenses and not lost revenues, yeah. So we're tracking all those things, you know, to try to make sure that we recover what we can. That's all I had in my report, unless anybody had any questions or I didn't cover something that you hoped to hear.
Ron, I actually had a question. Have you got an update, Ron, from the VA, for example? Do you know, are they currently housing COVID patients? Or?
I do not, David. And that actually came up in a conversation earlier today. We they've had changeover in personnel, and we don't have a great contact there at the moment to ask that question, but we our intention is to try to ascertain some information from them. To my knowledge, they did not admit any COVID patients into the facility. And so really, the question is, are you reoccupying the space in a different way? Right. Sometimes it's difficult to get that information, but we intended to pursue that just so we know. Again, I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, the fact that there's COVID patients at Saint East and at the VA doesn't necessarily represent additional hazard to our community. However, it is nice to know what's going on at those locations.
Good, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ron, for the report. Going down the agenda. We don't have any report of committees. There's nothing listed under old business. So down to new business, consideration of interlocal agreement with Campbell County Fiscal Court, and this is what you brought up in your report about the shared cost with the street. Is that correct?
Yes. What you have is an interlocal agreement. This is pretty common. This is hard to believe, but let me close my door. They're actually cleaning in the city building right now, so hold on one second.
I wondered what that noise was back there. Okay. His office needs cleaning, so it's good that they're there.
I heard that, Mayor, but they're not going to clean that mess for me. Sorry about that. The interlocal agreement is with the Campbell County Fiscal Court, and it's pretty standard when we've done this before. For example, when we did Churchill, we did an interlocal agreement with the city of Newport because a portion of that road was outside the city of Fort Thomas. But it was a continuation of the same roadway. In this case, Crowell Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, is scheduled In this case, Crawl Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, is scheduled in our program. We always reach out to the other agencies jurisdictions having authority and ask them if they're interested in doing something at the same time when we plan our projects. In this case, the fiscal court was interested in doing the remainder portion of Crawl and Eustis, which is off of Crawl and do it under the same contract. We would issue the bid documents and then we would bill them for all the work that was done outside the city of Fort Thomas. It amounts to about $63,000 or so. They're in agreement with that. We do have to approve an interlocal agreement. It has to go to the Department of Local Governments for approval from the state. That's standard protocol. Jan, if you want to add anything to that, but basically that's a requirement in order to do a contract relationship that way. So staff's recommending that we approve the interlocal agreement so that we do the street in its entirety.
Okay, great, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Would move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Melissa, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blough?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. Our second item under new business is consideration of Fourth of July activities. Okay. What are our options?
Yeah. I kind of outlined where I think we are in the staff memo. The Fourth of July is approaching rather quickly, as we all know. The standards that are put in place for gathering has not been expanded. And I think the potential is as limiting to maybe 50 people. I do think that the parade itself is obviously not conducive for, you know, meeting any of the standards that we're currently facing. And quite frankly, a lot of what we do with the Fourth of July activities are contrary to that. They're centered around having large groups together, whether it's the race, the parade, the, you know, the party in the park, it's music and so forth. And obviously, the fireworks at the end of the evening. Those are kind of the the four phases of what we do. We work with the YMCA. They do a lot of the volunteer and the coordinating for the race and the parade. And they are not in full staff and they rely on a volunteer base to to do those events. And obviously, they're not interacting that way right now. So they express some difficulty in pulling all those events up for a Fourth of July, aside from the obvious issues of gathering. However, they did check, they would have they subcontracted, for example, the timing for the race, the setup for all the timing mechanism that at the beginning and the finish line, those types of things. And we have reached out, I know Debbie talked with Rozzy because she managed that contract with Rozzy, to look at available dates, and they are available at different dates. So there is an option to do some of those activities at a later time. I think staff's a little uncomfortable with the idea that we could do anything on the Fourth and certainly interested in where council and the mayor are on that topic. But I think the options are, you know, cancellation for the Fourth, consideration of potentially a secondary date. And we could talk about what those dates might be or dividing those things up and doing them on different dates or just, you know, that would obviously be postponing them, but the last option would be just canceling those events for this calendar year. So I guess it kind of opened for discussion with council where you think staff should go with, you know, following through on this topic.
So we go ahead and do the parade, and we just do a lottery for 50 people to be able to watch the parade. And there's only 10 people in the parade, maybe that doesn't work. No, it's really a shame where we are, but you're right, Ron, with the we're still at 10 people, maybe that jumps to 50 people next month sometime. But the chances of it opening up further than that are are swindled none by by the Fourth. So yeah, anybody have any feelings on what we do about that?
My feeling is we have no choice but to cancel. We're probably going to see a spike mid-June because of the openings that have already happened. And so I don't think there's any choice but to cancel personally.
Are we working off of recommendations from the from the governor? Or are we, as a as a group, as a city, are we following recommendations? Or are we taking them as as gospel, basically? Do we have to follow them or do we?
Well, you know, that that's a long debate, I guess. We we have tried to maintain the recommendations of the CDC, certainly with our personnel and how we're operating internally and how we're interacting with the public and the governor's orders in terms of obviously reopening anything, anything that we're doing. We're also doing that in collaboration with the other communities, specifically in Campbell County. It was very disjointed coming into this because nobody was prepared for it that way. So for example, other communities were doing things one way, we were doing things a different way. And everybody kind of adjusted to what they felt was important at the time. Then coming out of this, the intention is that we're all doing things very similarly. And yes, we're trying to follow the guidelines that are being established nationally and through our state.
So Ken, were you saying postponement or cancellation?
I mean, it's it's hard to predict what's coming, but I think it it only makes sense that the numbers are going to go up in June as you have more interaction in the public and as things start to open up. I think there's going to be a little bit of, I would predict some regret. I mean, I know it has to happen, but I I would say cancellation is what I would advocate because I what I foresee coming down the pike, and we're not out of this yet.
So Ron, for the Rozzy agreement, do we have a contractual obligation to Rozzy? For example, I guess on postponement or cancellation?
No. Okay, no, we're, we bid that work, but there we're not under contract. We're obligated to have them perform or owe them for for the cost.
Okay. Unless we do. As similar question with the with the music contracts, do we have any financial skin right now?
No, I had Debbie reach out to them as well. She made contacts with them. We had two groups scheduled for the Fourth and we're not obligated to either one. And I failed to mention that earlier, but they are also available for future dates if we decided to do something with them. You know, the only right now, right now, everybody that was associated with the day is available for a subsequent date if if we were to choose to to try to recreate this on a different weekend.
Yeah, the only thing about trying to reschedule things and and, you know, got to be sensitive to the amount of staff time and so on that it takes to do that. This stuff all has a ripple effect. I mean, there are already things scheduled for later in the year. And and I just don't know that it's worth the effort to try to deal with all the consequences of trying to redo something later. It's like, it's like these college athletes giving a one-year extension, you know, of eligibility. Well, what about all the guys coming in, you know? I mean, you know, where's their chance to play now? So, you know, it's, I mean, I I just think it's really hard. You you can't make it up. It's not, I just don't think it's possible to make things up hardly because, you know, people are pretty tightly scheduled on stuff.
One, the one thought I had, Roger, and and everybody is that, yeah, that we just canceled the Fourth at the fort. But but perhaps Veterans Day, if there's an opportunity, depending on what the COVID situation is then, if there's an opportunity to maybe add something to that day, that maybe we expand a little bit on that. I'm not talking about concerts and that, but is there a chance to do a parade on that day? Don't know, but but that that's another possibility. But I I think as well that cancellation is probably the the wisest choice and not to try to reschedule something at this point. I mean, we still have merchants of music coming up, whether that can still go or not because that's in September, then near the end of September. Right. And that's a possibility, and maybe things are better by then, who knows? We may have to go through the same thing again in a couple of months and decide that that gets canceled as well.
Speaking of, I mean, that's a much bigger ticket item, the merchants and music, and I would hope that there's some force majeure kind of language in the contract that would protect us for that expense.
Yes.
Yes.
That's pretty standard in.
We'd be off the vote, yeah. Okay.
All right.
Just an aside to that, and you know, I don't know if we want to mayor duo any type of consensus here. What I'm hearing is that obviously the Fourth is off of the table. Is there any of those aspects that you want staff to pursue for a different date? Roger, your point's a good one. For example, you know, the first thing that came to mind was Labor Day. And I know from working with other groups, a lot of people are rescheduling things for later this year. So the calendar is getting crowded quickly, and for example, the Derby is scheduled now for that weekend. So if we need to pick a date, I would recommend that we do it sooner than later. If not, I think we should cancel without a pending potential date for a reschedule. We're also working at a staff level to try to look at some other things that fit offerings that we can do in the community that are smaller smaller gatherings, for example, and maybe utilizing different parks in the community. So somebody mentioned the music, for example, maybe doing smaller groups for music in in neighborhood parks and have walk-in events, that type of thing, where it's more of a neighborhood only and it's not a whole community thing with the expectation. So we're bouncing around a lot of ideas like that. But the bigger events are a little bit difficult to manage in terms of any reality that that we might be through this enough to do something with that larger event. Merchant, withstanding.
Yeah, I think I think that's a good point, Ron, because I think we might have an opportunity at some point in the future to do something. I remember this past year, the Pumpkin Walk in conjunction to what with what the schools did because of the construction of the schools was just a really neat event up at the fort. And it it's possible that maybe we could schedule some events like that. If we get far enough beyond this, smaller events, utilize the parks, I think that's a great idea. Give something for people to look forward to and and being able to get back in the community again, if and when we get beyond this, where where we have the ability to do that.
You know, I'd like to say, I like to say a little something about, you know, when we do start scheduling events, and I think Ken brought up a nice point about the the farmer's market up there. I think we need to make sure that we have staff on hand at these events, especially at small groups that we can contain and perhaps have someone assigned to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Someone like basically a COVID bouncer. You know, I mean, it it it's tough a little bit, but the truth of the matter is, we have an obligation to make sure everybody's safe and follow the guidelines. And some people don't do that or they're nervous to do that around people because that's not what they do. So it's it's a thought, you know, I definitely, I was, I actually went downtown this weekend and went to Jefferson Social, and they had someone out there making sure all the tables were clean, making sure people were standing far apart and doing a lot. And I thought that spoke volumes to how much they care about public perception and what's going on. So I just think it's a, it's something to consider when we do have.
Oh, you're, I I agree, and we certainly wouldn't do any events where we don't have it staffed well enough. And those are, those are new aspects for us. I would chuckle because I wouldn't necessarily work to them as bouncers, but.
But you know, I mean, that's basically, they're basically doing something. You're basically telling people what they have to do. You know, I mean, no hats, you know what I mean? No ripped shirts or ripped jeans kind of stuff. It's not a fun gig, no matter what, you know? And and I think people too, when they first come to this first event in June, I think what happened in Cincinnati is a prime example, people are getting overzealous and getting excited. And I think it's hard not to, you know, and you see people and you see people we haven't seen in a while. So I think it's something just to be wary of personally.
You know, the one thing, if you want to spend some time thinking about how it could be done and checking it out is it'd really be great to try to open these playgrounds again. And I don't know if there's any way to do it. I mean, Adam's point about, you know, having a monitor there as opposed to, say, a bouncer and or or having hand sanitizing stations or having odd and even numbered days that people can go or something. You know, that that playground stuff is, you know, there's a lot of kids that just don't have anywhere to go and we're used to that. I I really like to have some focus on that.
I think that.
Touching the play equipment, and I mean, that would, that seems completely unmanageable, especially at this stage.
Well, but the idea is you wash your hands. Now, I know with kids, I mean, you know, you can expand that out to anything as far as going to the grocery or whatever you do. I, you know, and if parents are there and they're diligent about it, I mean, I know kids touch their eyes and out outside, you know, they say that the distancing isn't as much of a concern. Apparently, the, you know, airdrops don't travel that far outside or they dissipate or whatever. I don't know, I mean, there may be ideas around the country that people.
Earthquake contamination?
But I, you know, I think that's, if we're going to spend time on looking at anything, that would have high value.
I think, Roger, you're you're right that we have to figure out how to how to provide quality of life services, but the, I think the the playground thing is a heavy lift right now. I kind of, I I agree with Ken on that, that it's it's not super feasible. The the way that they're reopening a lot of these things is they're they're being really, really restrictive. And one of those restrictive mandates is you got to provide, you you have to provide the cleaning service. You have to do it. And we can't really rely on users to 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 do that. So I think that would be a real heavy lift for from a city perspective to try to get that done. But I I do agree with you that, and I think Ron kind of said that, we're working on ideas, and I think we, that's where staff time should be deployed right now is to figure out how do we, how do we provide things that are quality of life for our residents without without, you know, putting them at risk? And I think that's the trick right now is to try to do that.
Okay. Ron, great, great. Great report, a lot of information. We've gone through Fourth of July. The the next item on the agenda is the expanded outdoor dining options, which has been tried in a couple of different areas. So we're going to open that up for discussion.
I'll just preface the conversation that, you know, obviously with the reopening, and that's part of what we're doing here, is having a lot of the same conversations that other people are having. This item has has come across our desk here. It it's something that other communities have started to deal with. We've made some inquiries, there's been some some draft guidelines that have been shared. Again, we're collaborating with our fellow communities in Campbell County to try to get some direction. We've looked at what we have in our community, and again, situations can be different, even though we're all small cities. But we wanted to just have a little bit of conversation in the same vein that we have been looking at what we can do as a city to afford the best opportunities to do something safely that kind of matches with what some of the orders are that we're receiving from, you know, the federal and state government about what we should be doing conduct wise. The outdoor dining, we obviously allow it and permit it by ordinance when you when you have food sales. We have locations in the community where people take advantage of that, some of our businesses. Some of the things that have been discussed is just expanding that because of the limitations on the occupancies within the buildings. But recognition that you could do outdoor dining easier in terms of social distancing and creating space outside the occupancy of the building itself. There's a number of inhibiting factors there. So really, the conversation needs to be, you know, how far do we go? What do we consider? You know, maintaining distance from pedestrians because we've had a lot of input about people, we're a very walkable community. We have a lot of people that are taking advantage of our network of sidewalks to walk because there's not a lot of other activities they can can take part in. Making sure that we have separation of that conflict is an issue. Maintaining accessibility for walkers and or the diners. If you expand the spaces out in front of those buildings. For example, you can't maneuver and put walkers out in the street in the curb lane necessarily without giving them accessibility at the intersections. And if we have bump outs to be able to traverse over and and beyond them. So at first blush, it seems easy enough to just say, well, we'll take some parking lanes and we'll allow them to expand some seating area, but there are a lot of other layers to this thing. So I thought it would open the discussion and and just see if there's some conversation that we can share with our public about what we might consider or what's available. So I thought it would open the discussion and just see if there's some conversation that we can share with our public about what we might consider or what's available. As, as far as what the city can do to assist in that regard.
Well, Ron, I think one way we could deal with this is maybe just to let the, the restaurant folks know that the city is willing to discuss options with them. And it may be that they talk with their neighboring groups about expanding a little bit further on the sidewalk. If there is an opportunity to take a parking space or two for expanded seating. One of the things I noticed, you talked about people walking and, and riding bikes and walking dogs. I noticed today when I was actually, Ron, when I was driving to meet you up at the fort. We talked about the avenue. This is a little unrelated, but we talked about having the Share Road lane on the avenue. And I noticed that there were two people walking dogs and the one person walked all the way into the lane to, to have that separation. So I ended up moving over to the left-hand lane. And normally you travel in the right-hand lane and you have the left, left-hand lane to be used for, 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 for passing. But maybe if we, if we all start kind of going on the inside lanes to leave the outside lanes for people to be able to walk if they're walking around people. And also for the potential expansion of, of other activities that people may want to do. But maybe we just do it on a case-by-case basis and see what kind of requests people come up with and see if there's a way we can accommodate. I don't know that we can create an environment that says yes, we can do A, B, C without really knowing what those are.
Thank you. I agree. I, I don't think there's any reason to spend a whole lot of time other than initiating some communication because you know, it's the, the, the owners are going to have to come up with the ideas themselves as to what might be feasible for them. I mean, I, I did, I really wonder how many restaurants can even open with a one-third capacity, you know, and their facilities and that. So I, I'd get that input. I think that's worth it. Like you said, Mayor and but, but beyond that, I don't think we can initiate any ideas because we don't know how those businesses operate, right?
Any other thoughts?
I, I think, I think what you said was perfect, Mayor Hoff. I think you find out what their needs are and what their wants are and just because everybody has a different area around them and they need to work together, even if it's taking a couple of parking spots. I think the city should look into that license, maybe possibly that they, where they can, the carry, they can take their beers from place to place. In the areas, I think Bellevue just initiated that. I think, is there city attorney Fessler? Worked on that for him. So he might be some, a good information on that, but I think you can apply for a license for certain parts of town. So that we can, they can carry their beers back and forth. It might give them a little bit. Since people are going to be outside, just another avenue for them to explore to kind of make up some of the ground they lost over the last couple of months. So see how they're going down there with that. Just a suggestion, but I think you are spot on to see what their needs are personally.
Yeah, that's, that's a concept of creating an entertainment district where you have parameters and there's typically restrictions on the containers that they can use to transport within a district area, that type of thing. So we could certainly look into that. The you know, we can reach out to the businesses again. I think we just want to be able to convey that the city has interest in considering those things. Dan, help me out. And we may have to, to write some guidelines that, that would work for them. We have to offer it to all the businesses. You know, within the same guidelines. We wouldn't want to do something that, that cuts off anybody else's ability inherently. But there are limiting factors, as I indicated at the outset, that might make it difficult for some or all to obtain. We did reach out to the state. Obviously, most of our businesses are located on a state route. As far as any, any encroachment within the right of way or the areas out front that it might be affected in the roadway. So we would have to comply with those issues as well.
Well, and, and Ron, one of the reasons I brought it up is, I'll just give you an example, say the nine fifteen. The, if nine fifteen can work with its neighbors and expand on the sidewalk in both directions in front of other businesses, if the other businesses don't care if they set out some more tables. Maybe they wouldn't have to come into the street, or maybe they do come into a couple of parking spaces and expand. And that could happen in the midway district as well. Whereas maybe they can expand and, and left and right rather than necessarily out in closer to the lane of traffic. Cause I know that is a, a safety concern as well, even the way it's set up now, there's concern about traffic being in close proximity to the patrons. But again, I think we just let them know we're willing to work with them, see what kind of ideas they come up with. And then Ron, you and Jan get together and say, okay, you know, this, this will work or this won't work. If we have to check with the state, we get approval on something and we do that. But we try, just try to be reactive to, to ideas that they have.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. Well, okay, we've, we, we've we didn't take a vote on canceling fourth at the fort. Do we need that? Or the consensus is we're just going to go ahead and cancel? Or would you like to have a vote on that?
Let's don't blame it on staff. I want to blame it on staff if, if we cancel stuff, so.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
No, staff blaming on council, that's why we're having the conversation.
You can do that. If we say nothing, we can all point fingers. Yeah.
That's true. Yes. I, Mayor, I don't think it requires a vote. I think, I think it was the reason we put it on the agenda, it's such an important thing to our community. And I think we all recognize that and the conversation pairs that out. It, it was simply just, you know, let's, let's make sure we think it all the way through. I think I, there was a pretty strong consensus that, that the fourth isn't going to work. The other thing I heard was that it, it would be really difficult to take that day and move it forward in this calendar year and try to pull that off in total.
Yeah.
So again, staff will be looking at alternatives beyond those. We'll lose that tradition. It'll be the year with the asterisk of no parade and maybe no race. But you know, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to bring things to council about things that, that maybe are more achievable in the community because that's our goal still. So.
All right. Great. Thanks, everybody. We are to finance committee report on disbursements. Melissa?
Report of disbursements, April fourteenth through May fourteenth, twenty twenty, general fund, two hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. Power Park Fund, five thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, thirty-one thousand, two hundred forty dollars and thirty-six cents. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, one thousand, one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD Revitalization, seven thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. Waste Fees, ninety-five thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Police and Fire Pension Fund, one thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. We, the undersigned members of the finance committee recommend that warrants numbered seven, four, three, five, three, seven, six, four, five be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Beesold, member, Mr. Cameron, member.
All right, entertain the motion.
To approve.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Beesold.
Hi.
Mr. Peterman.
Hi.
Mr. Blau.
Hi.
Mayor, Mayor, I did have a point of order. We did have another item. I had listed under old business, but it also goes under update or under my report, if we could go back and catch that.
Sure.
In, in the memo, I had it listed under your old business, but it is an updating in a report. It was revisiting, updating our communication study.
Oh, that's right.
And we had forwarded information in your packet. They went back and this, this dates back a couple of years where we set out to, to look, it's not a full two years, but we've been working on it for a while. Where we did a study on, on, on kind of a lot of our communications. What we use, the tools that we use for communicating in the city. You know, it covered, it was pretty comprehensive. It covered, you know, our outdoor signings at the city building, our newsletter, other, other methods, social media, excuse me, and so forth. And I know Mark did some contributing to that after, after we had done the initial study. And we have an update and I'll, I'll kind of look to Joe. We have been working with, and you all know that we did an outside agency that's working on our update of our website. So I'd like for Joe to, to touch on that and then pick up the conversation beyond that. So.
Well, Melissa, I actually met with Sean Mummer from Cincinnati Creative. He lives in town over on Rossmore. And he's been working on updating our website. He's really making great progress. The, the website as it, as it exists now, you all are obviously familiar with it. It is just one continuous stream of stuff from the top to the bottom, nothing really separated out. John's doing a lot of work separating all of that out into wireframes, as he puts it, to, you know, separate things and have things side by side. For instance, an event section with, with the Facebook feed update. He, he's really working on that for all the pages. He had a kind of a test page with the Renaissance page. Just as a visual for us and it was really quite, really quite impressive. It, it, it looks so completely different, so much more functional than it does right now. The other thing he updated us on was the events calendar, which is kind of an action item for the city. Obviously, and Melissa and I will be working on that in the future. Really breaking down all of the city's events by category, Renaissance events, city boards, city meetings, things of that nature. In, in, into a, a functional calendar. And we worked on both actually doing a little bit of training as far as how to update that with Melissa. And Melissa had said it actually looked significantly easier than the current WordPress setup. Updating that and really the next action items to get that calendar moving forward. So we really had a great meeting and going forward, we're working on creating the categories and separating the events out into categories. And Sean's working on updating the rest of our pages, you know, the public safety pages, the recreation pages, the main pages into those wireframes to make it a more functional site. So that's, that's really where we stand right now. Things are progressing quite well, really. We're looking to have another meeting here in probably the next couple of weeks with more training, more updates of that nature. And the original, the original rollout, it was really the end of this fiscal year. And at this point, I, I don't see any reason we can't meet that.
And Joe, the last item would be, and I think you may have mentioned it, the ability for a sign up for a city newsletter and or an enhanced notification system from the city.
Right.
For anything related to city business.
That's, that, that's really just a natural step after we, after we set forth those categories and get that advanced calendar out there to determine, you know, what you would like to be notified on. Do you want city meetings? Do you want events? Do you want all of the above? That, that, that's kind of a, a, a final step. Once we get the rest of the framework in place.
Good. That's great. So kind of picking this topic, we, obviously this situation and the fact that we're in this forum tonight has highlighted maybe some of the benefits of, of moving forward sooner than later with some of the initiatives that were in that communication plan. To that end, I know Joe and I have been working with our IT folks. We're, we're feeding from Facebook tonight. We are looking to set up a four Thomas YouTube page. I referenced some committee meetings before. We're going to be conducting our public meetings. We're going to be doing committee meetings, continuation of council meetings likely are going to be in this format, at least in the short term. A YouTube web, webpage, what's a four Thomas webpage allows us a little different flexibility to, to document our meetings. So we're going to move in that direction. And then the social media aspect and communications beyond what we have traditionally done. I think we're at a moment where we want to look at our social media presence and look at our you know, we don't really have a lot of standards. We don't have personnel assigned for those responsibilities. So I think we, it's, it's time to maybe pause and look at those things. Look at what policies might be needed to be put in place. And beyond that, look at potentially in our budget process, placeholder, an opportunity to have maybe somebody brought in to help facilitate those, those types of activities on behalf of the city. We've, we've referenced as, as far back as that memo that we don't have that type of personnel. It's kind of a gap in our organization. We don't have that IT expertise. We don't have that social media expertise in our staff. We don't have anyone assigned to do communications and or that type of activities on behalf of the city. So it might be worth a conversation to, to look at that as, as something moving forward. And certainly, again, this, this situation has highlighted a number of those things from a communication and technology standpoint that maybe we're lacking.
You know, I'd like to say that I think this is, it, obviously, social media and the technology moves so fast, it's hard to keep up with. So it's understandable. Two things here. There one is, we just really need to get a universal message out. Because with social media, things get distorted so fast. Through feeds and people assuming they know what's going on, like filling up one island of what's going on and why that was delayed. There's, there's several different groups out there. So and having one universal message that comes from the city can help eliminate those problems really easily. Secondly, we have Mark Collier until January first. I, he is a master on social media and messaging. He, he works for a lot of different schools and whatnot and does this. I think, I think we should use him, abuse him because January first, he costs money per hour. So I think we should take advantage of him for sure and beat him up and, and wear him out a little bit. But I think this is great. I think it's a step in the right direction and hopefully it settles things down on social media, but it won't.
How about the same amount that you get paid as a councilman right now?
I'm happy to, to volunteer and I think I've said this to, to everybody, as, as much as you need me, Joe, or Melissa, or Ron, if, if you guys are taking those meetings, I'm happy to jump in and just, you know, placeholder and see where we are. Maybe just pose questions to ask, to make sure that we're, you know, hitting certain metrics. I'd be happy to do that.
Any other comments, questions?
Do we, do we need to send that to, real quick, do we need to send that to law, labor license, the, the review? Or how does that work?
Well, I think I, you know, I think we have some documentation of what we think our game plan is. I think the issue of policy goes back to staff to develop some of that policy if we need to have anything formalized. And the part for funding it would go to finance committee for any potential funding of that position. So.
Thank you.
All right.
If I could interject, I would appreciate that, that Mark, you know, has the skills established, he gives the admin on tons of pages as it is now, but I, I see a potential conflict down the road. If there starts being remuneration, some, you know, a paid position. You know, after January, I, I think it's different if we, if we entered into something like that, you know, next year, but I mean, to try to lean towards a decision like that now in this current term seems a little.
I wasn't, I wasn't kidding. I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't suggesting we hire him.
I think he was kidding.
Yeah, absolutely. So he's too expensive for the city anyways.
Okay. So we'll just mark that one off as if we were just kidding. Okay.
All right. We are down to, Ron, if, if you're done with that area, we'll go down to ordinances.
I think we're there.
Okay. We have a municipal order. Melissa, you'd like to read the first one?
Yep. Municipal Order, MO fifteen, twenty twenty, and municipal order reappointing Dave Wormald as a member of the Planning Commission of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
All right. That requires a vote, does it not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Beesold.
Hi.
Mr. Peterman. Mr. Blau.
Hi.
All right. We're down to, we have three executive orders. EO twelve.
Executive Order, EO twelve, twenty twenty, and executive order reappointing Kim Richton as a member of the Renaissance Board of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
All right. There's no action required on that. So executive order, EO thirteen.
Executive Order, EO thirteen, twenty twenty, and executive order reappointing Kathy Sonnet as a member of the Renaissance Board of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
All right. Again, action required. Executive Order fourteen.
Executive Order, EO fourteen, twenty twenty, and executive order reappointing Michelle Knight as a member of the Renaissance Board of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
All right. That's it for our agenda. All right, that's it for our agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? I guess, yeah, cause it's on the agenda.
I just want to ask Melissa, um, I'm assuming, cause I didn't get on the meeting, you voted on the minutes.
Yes.
To start the meeting. Could you show me either as not present or abstaining because, you know, I'm not getting your files. On the uh, on my iPad, so I didn't see them.
Okay, yeah.
On that topic too, the, the Renaissance annual report. Was sideways and really hard to see if it could be uprighted in the files that are sent to, you know, on the iPad.
I tried to do that, but it wouldn't let me turn it. So I don't know if I'll have to go to Debbie and see if she can turn it.
Okay. It was Joe's fault, he's sorry.
Yeah, it was me.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you all very much for your time tonight. I'm looking forward to when we can all get back in the same room together because. While this is, technology is great, it's not the same as being in the same room. But it's all we got right now. So everybody stay safe and healthy and we'll see you at our next meeting. Thank you all.
Mayor, thank you.